The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tru, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Anowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, twenty-one present.
Quarant being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend Mike Kenman from Christ Church Cathedral.
Good morning. Let's just take a moment of silence, feel the ground underneath our feet. Not so much ask God to be present, but remember that God is present. God, you are a God who implants visions in your people. And the vision you have implanted in all your people of every tradition throughout time is a vision of a promised land, a land where none of us are natives, but all of us call it home, a land without power or privilege of the few, but of a people working together for the common good, a heavenly city that makes glad your heart. We know that city is not a place we reach all at once, or a place that magically appears by itself. We can only reach it through your leadership. But even as you lead us there, you have given us the charge to build it here in this city of St. Louis. And because we will never build it out of despair, give us the gift of hope. Because we will never build it out of fear, give us the gift of courage. Because we will never build it out of division, give us the spirit of reconciliation. Because we will never build it out of narrowness of mind, give us the gift of broadness and generosity of spirit. And because we will never build it out of arrogance and hard hardestness, give us the gifts of humility and compassion. Holy God, if we are to pick up the tools to build this city, we need to lay down some other things we're holding on to pretty tightly. So I invite us here to lay down and release those things which keep us from picking up the tools to build this city that makes glad your heart. Loud or in the silence of our hearts, I invite us to lay down the grudges that we might hold against one another. Loud or in the silence of our hearts, I invite us to lay down the certainties in our own agendas that might prevent us from listening deeply and hearing God's voice in one another. Loud or in the silence of our hearts, I invite us to lay down the pain and burdens we carry from all corners of our life, and to let God carry those burdens, and to seek ways we can help carry them for each other. God, we ask your blessing on this session. Implant in us a wisdom for the common good that is beyond us each individually, but which we can reach together. Ignite in us a passion for the common good that will overwhelm any temptations to a personal good. Finally, bind us together in the quest for the common good, the promised land, that heavenly city. For we know that the only way we will reach it is if we travel together. Let the people say amen. Thank you very much.
Beautiful opening prayer. Let's give Reverend a round of applause for that. We spend with our regular order of business, take our courtesy resolution calendar. I move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar in the second. Second about Alderman from the twentieth. We're going to take up Resolution 168. Alderman from the twentieth, would you like to approach the dais? Madam Prosecutor, and Terry Tyson and his family. Anybody that's going to join us, please come up.
Mr. President, members of the Board, first of all, thank you to the President for bringing this to our attention, and also especially to Don Tyson for all of his great work in the Circuit Attorney's Office. You know, having a great city and having one that deals with the criminal element also requires people who are going to be in the trenches and performing the warfare that occurs on a daily basis in our courts. And Mr. Tyson has done that for the last almost thirty years, trying over two hundred trials before juries and before judges. And of course, that means he's prepared for a lot of other trials. And as part of that, I'm sure that he is most proud, as we all are, of his family. Because for every one of those trials, they have had to be there to support him for that. And he is the husband of Peg Tyson, and the father of Margaret Tyson, and Sean Tyson, and the proud grandfather of Margaret Amelia, who I see here is on this stage and enjoying every moment of this. Also, for every person who goes before the judge or the jury, there has to be a great team. And we have a great team in the Circuit Attorney's Office, and many of them are up in the gallery today. So if we could all give them a round of applause as well for all of their efforts. So I know that the President has more to say about this. I've had the ability of giving our thanks on behalf of the entire Board of Aldermen and of all those in this city who are looking for the protection that you provide by your willingness and your ability to go before judge and jury. Because for every time you go before them, it also means that criminals understand that perhaps they need to plead out, because there will be someone there who is capable and willing. So thank you for all your service to this community. Thank you to your family.
Now, Donald, I'm not going to... Actually, I might, I may read the entire resolution, just so that we have it in the record. Whereas Assistant Circuit Attorney Donald K. Tyson has reached a significant legal milestone by trying before a jury over two hundred trials. And whereas Donald K. Tyson began his legal career at the Circuit Attorney's Office on January third, nineteen eighty-three, as an Assistant Circuit Attorney. And whereas Donald K. Tyson is the team leader for the Career Criminal Unit and is the head of homicide cases for the Circuit Attorney. And whereas Mr. Tyson has managed and mentored countless Assistant Circuit Attorneys, and since nineteen ninety-nine has served as a felony team leader for the Circuit Attorney. And whereas Mr. Tyson dedicated service to the city of St. Louis includes prosecuting every type of crime to the fullest extent of the law, exemplifying the utmost ethics and professionalism. And whereas Mr. Tyson worked on over two hundred jury trials reflecting his compassion, advocacy, and dedication. And whereas his trial work shows his dedication to holding criminals accountable and sending a strong message to those criminals that they will face their day in court in St. Louis. And whereas Mr. Tyson is the husband of Peg Tyson, father of Margaret Tyson, and Sean Tyson, and proud grandfather of Margaret Amelia Tyson. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate and thank Donald K. Tyson for his many years of service on behalf of the citizens of the city of St. Louis, and for his tremendous feat of trying over two hundred jury trials. We further direct the clerk to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings, and to the end, prepare a commemorative copy to be given to the honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by its sponsor. So Mr. Tyson, I cannot thank you enough. This resolution, when we give a resolution at the Board of Aldermen, is the highest honor the Board has to give. And we give it to people who have really worked within our communities and shown that they've gone beyond just the norm. You indeed have gone way beyond just the norm. And I know it has taken a toll on your family, because to try over two hundred cases, I was talking to the prosecutor attorney a little bit earlier, that means that you actually had, like, thousands of cases, and tried two hundred in front of a jury. And I think the prosecutor's going to talk about this in a minute. But what it does is that it cements in time your name with the city of St. Louis. So a hundred, two hundred years from now, your kids and your kids' kids and people, when they research the records of the city of St. Louis, they'll find the name Donald K. Tyson buried amongst those records. And they know that you've come this way, and you made such a significant contribution to this city, that we pause in our deliberations this day to recognize your contributions to the city of St. Louis. Before we give you the resolution, we have to bring up the boss.
Oh, absolutely.
And she's not just the boss over there.
I just, I'll be very brief. I want to thank President Reed and Alderman Schmidt and all of the Board of Aldermen for taking a moment of your time this morning to recognize such an outstanding public servant. This morning may be the first time you've ever heard the name Donald K. Tyson. He's not a household word. You know, people haven't heard of him. But I guarantee you that each and every one of your constituents' lives have been improved by the body of his work. Because he has gotten the most violent, most dangerous, most harmful people in the city of St. Louis off the streets, and we are all safer because of that. So I'm grateful to you for honoring Don and the rest of our crew, who I think has squeezed into the gallery upstairs. And I thank you so much.
Don, it's almost your time to talk. But again, before we move on, I would move that we pass this resolution in bank, second about Alderman from the twentieth. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change and have a new resolution drawn up in bank.
So noted.
So Mr. Tyson, again, on behalf of the citizens of the city of St. Louis, my family and friends, and I'm sure people all across the city who cannot thank you personally, we do thank you for doing your part to make St. Louis safer. And we're honored to provide you with this resolution today.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say that I am grateful and I am humbled by your honor and by your recognition. Frankly, all I've had to do is show up at the best job I could imagine having for the last thirty years. It's such a luxury to have a job where I get to wear the white hat all the time. And the only question I have to answer for myself every day and for the people that I work with and advise is, am I doing the right thing? It's just that easy. I want to thank my boss, the Circuit Attorney Jennifer Joyce. She has extended so much support and trusted me, allowing me to handle these incredibly serious cases, for trusting me to supervise lawyers in the Violent Crime Unit and now the Career Criminal Unit and the Homicide Team. I want to thank the rest of the executive staff who support me. I have to give a special recognition for my mentor and one of my best friends, the Chief Trial Assistant Shirley Rogers. Her knowledge and her support have allowed me to succeed and do the job that I do, along with everybody else in the office. I have to thank my first boss, George Peach. I'm sure most of you have heard of him. He took a flyer on a kid out of law school and saw something that I probably didn't, and he changed my life. So I will always be indebted to him. And I have to thank my family. As President Reed said, trial attorneys, especially when they're in trial on big cases with high stakes, were under a lot of pressure, and it is not easy to live with us. Absolutely. So there's a group of people out there in the world who know that. And I am so grateful to my lovely, supportive, beautiful wife Peggy, who has put up with me on my worst days for a good cause. I want to thank my children, Sean and Maggie. They know that there's been times I couldn't be there for them because of this job. And they've done nothing but show support and expressing their pride in what I do, and I appreciate that. I appreciate my sisters and my brothers-in-law. My brothers-in-law Phil and David are here today. And lastly, and certainly not least, I have to express an incredible debt of gratitude to perhaps the most kind-hearted, generous man I've ever met, and that's my dad. As proud as I am of what I've accomplished in my professional life, I am more proud to say that I am his son, and I love him. Thank you.
Any further comments? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Well, again, thank you, Ms. Tyson. I think we're going to do a photo over here this night. Trying two hundred trials, that's a big deal. We will move mountains when Mark McGuire hit seventy-some-odd home runs. And that's our Mark McGuire right here in the city of St. Louis, so we can't thank them enough. It's been moved, the second that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to introduce as our special honored guest, our newly-elected treasurer for the city of St. Louis, Ms. Tashara Jones.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, Tashara's father, Verdi Jones. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President.
No, twenty-eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman from the twen... Okay. Okay. Alderman from the fourteenth, then.
Pardon me, Alderman. President Reed, I'd like to have as my honored guest, Painter's District Council Representative Gary Otten, and Paige Lux, also from the Painter's District Council, number two. And I'd like to enter to recognize the Jones family for their longextended service to the city of St. Louis. And I appreciate Tashara's new assignment to treasurer of the city of St. Louis, and I wish her the best and look forward to working with her. Thank you.
Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Donald Summers and David Holmes of the Plumberson Pike Thitters, and Anthony Lancia with AGC.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour. And he's here today.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to recognize from the License Collector's Office, Isaiah DeLorenzo, who is our liaison here with the Board of Aldermen. But what you don't know is that he is more than just a liaison. He really cares about the city and volunteers an awful lot in the community. So I just want to personally thank you in public for all that you do.
Plus, he's an avid cyclist. I love that guy. Scott. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to have as my special guest, Carla Rose, who will be voting on a little bit later for the Mental Health Board, and Celeste Reader, and Al from the Firefighters.
Welcome to the Board. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the eighth? Nope. Alderman from thirteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the October twenty-sixth meeting.
Moved by the Alderman from thirteenth, seconded by Alderman from eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. We forgot one thing. Joe, that's a... Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
I'd like to have as my special guest this morning, if you look up in the gallery, the fourth grade students from New City School who were here before our meeting and asked all of their questions, and they've been waiting patiently. So I'd like to recognize all of them and have them as my special guest today. Thank you.
Alderman from the tenth, you can now wrap us up. We had to wait till the New City kids got settled in the galleries before we wrapped it up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As we gather here on November ninth, it was on this day in the year sixteen twenty that the pilgrims first spotted land. And I'm happy to have as my guest the man who turned the miles stannish and said, "That rock over there looks good. Let's try that." Mr. Fred Steffen.
Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes. I have from as honor the mayor, the following correspondence. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the St. Louis Mental Health Board. The appointment of Carolyn Jackson, who resides at seven twenty-four North Newstead, and whose term will expire on December the thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. The appointment of Carla Rose, who resides at fifty-four fifty-three Lindenwood, and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slame, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Mental Health Board.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would move to approve the appointments of Carolyn Jackson and Carla Rose, the mental health board.
Moved by the Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of reporter city officials.
With dispensing line items seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? With dispensing line items eight through ten. First, we need a Board Bill.
Board Bill two fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-one thirty-seven Manchester containing a severability clause. Board Bill two fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-two twenty-five through twenty-nine Le Cleve containing a severability clause. Board Bill two sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Arrendez at Dover, causing it to be three-way stop intersection containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Florida and ordinance making it unlawful to commit the acts of domestic assault and domestic harassment containing a definition, a penalty, and a severability clause. Board Bill two eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, and Alderman Cruzen and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to provide for the establishment of a Central West End farm-based district containing a severability clause and an effective date clause. Board Bill two nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Scanlon at Leola, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Tam at Smiley, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty-one, sponsored by Alderman Tru and ordinance pertaining to the hours of operation for scrap metal dealers repealing Section five of ordinance six nine oh one three. Board Bill two two two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance establishing the Forest Park Southeast Special Business District, setting its boundaries, tax rate, initial rate of levy, subject to approval of the qualified voters' bonding authority and to use, and uses, uses to which tax revenue may be put, creating a Board of Commissioners and containing a severability effectiveness and emergency clause. As Board Bill two twenty-three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Forest Park Southeast Special Business District, a proposal to renew and continue the levy tax on real property located in said district, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at an election on April the second, two thousand thirteen, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty-four, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderman Davis and ordinance establishing the Botanical Heights West Special Business District, setting its boundaries, tax rate, initial rate of levy, subject to approval of the qualified voters' bonding authority and to use, uses to which tax revenue may be put, creating a Board of Commissioners and containing a severability effectiveness and an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderman Davis and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Botanical Heights West Special Business District, a proposal to renew and continue the levy on real property located in said district, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at an election on April the second, two thousand thirteen, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty-six, sponsored by Alderman Anowitz and ordinance directing the director of streets to temporarily close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Prim Lane by blocking said traffic flow at the West Curb Line, of, curb lane of Stole Street. Board Bill two twenty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic, traveling on Juniata at Clifton, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and ordinance recommended by, and recommended by and authorizing and directing the Board of Public Service to let contracts purchased, materials purchased, equipment and supplies employed, labor hired, consultants pay fees, salaries and wages to provide for building facility and equipment improvements to the City Water Division to appropriate and pay the estimated cost of five million dollars from the Water Works Contention Account containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen and ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a fourth amendment to the memorandum of agreement with the Bi-State Development Agency for the purpose of authorizing said agency to issue refunding obligations payable and secured by the pledge of the annual appropriation of the quarter cent sales tax levied by the city for public transportation purposes. Board Bill two thirty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twelve eighteen Central Industrial Drive containing a severability clause. Board Bill two thirty-one, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for nine twenty South Taylor and forty-four fifty West Pappen, containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Utility Committee. Board Bill two twenty-eight to the Housing Committee. Board Bills two eighteen, two thirty, and two thirty-one to the Public Safety Committee. Board Bills two seventeen and two twenty-one to the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bills two fourteen and two fifteen to the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bills two twenty-two, two twenty-three, two twenty-four, two twenty-five, and two twenty-nine, and to the Streets Committee. Board Bills two sixteen, two nineteen, two twenty, two twenty-six, and two twenty-seven. That's the extent of reference to committees. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill fifty-one, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Conan, ordinance amending ordinance six four five nine two by modifying the terms of the real estate tax abatement for thirty-nine fifty-two through fifty-eight South Grand in the Graboy South Grand Merrimack redevelopment area. Board Bill one thirty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance approving an amended blighting study and a redevelopment plan for two-ten North Tucker containing a severability clause. Board Bill one fifty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderwoman Cruzen and ordinance amending ordinance six four five oh nine by modifying terms of real estate tax abatement for fifty-seven hundred Oakland redevelopment area. Board Bill one seven eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fifty-two hundred through forty North Second Street. Board Bill two thirteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance authorizing execution of a development agreement between the city of St. Louis and Lord and Taylor LLC and authorizing reimbursement to Lord and Taylor LLC prescribing the form and details of said agreement, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other related actions in connection therewith, and containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Public Safety Committee. Board Bill seventy-eight, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance adopted pursuant to Chapter twenty-four of the revised codes extending the boundaries of the Hyde Park Historic District. Board Bill one nine one, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance pertaining to the Eastern Star Missionary Baptist Church located at thirty-one seventeen St. Louis Avenue, having as subject matter the designation of the property as a city landmark containing definitions, design standards, a severability clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill one nine two, sponsored by Alderman Moore and Alderman French and ordinance pertaining to preservation review districts. Board Bill two oh six, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance repealing ordinance six eight nine 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 and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently nonlicensed premises within the boundaries of the nineteenth Ward Liquor Control District containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading.
With dispensal line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill seventy-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city and Shoto Crossing Community Improvement District containing a severability clause. Board Bill ninety-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city and sixteen oh one South Jefferson Community Improvement District containing a severability clause. Board Bill one two nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-three oh one Pastelosi containing a severability clause. Board Bill one four two, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-three fifteen through twenty-three twenty-three Tennessee. Board Bill one four three, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight oh one through oh three Akomac. Board Bill one thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight oh one Wyoming containing a severability clause. Board Bill one forty, sponsored by Alderwoman Trip... Alderwoman Florida and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight sixty-two McDonald. Board Bill one forty-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight thirty-eight South Utah. Board Bill two hundred, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance renewing the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District, setting its boundaries, tax rate, initial rate of levy, subject to the approval of the qualified voter's bonding authority containing a board of commissioners and containing a severability effectiveness and emergency clauses. Board Bill two oh one, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District, a proposal to renew and continue to levy a tax on the real property located in said district, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at an election on March the fifth, two thousand thirteen, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one five one, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight thirty-seven Wyoming containing a severability clause. Board Bill one eighty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-six fourteen Arsenal. Board Bill one twenty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty fifty-two Botanical containing a severability clause. Board Bill one fifty, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty fifty-nine through sixty-one Shannon Door containing a severability clause. Board Bill one eight two, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-nine fifty-one Cleveland containing a severability clause. Board Bill one eight three, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for thirty-eight twenty-five Cleveland containing a severability clause. Board Bill one eight four, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-nine thirty-two Castleman containing a severability clause. Board Bill one four four, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four oh eight Wisconsin. Board Bill one four five, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-three twelve Missouri containing a severability clause. Board Bill one four six, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for nineteen twenty Sydney containing a severability clause. Board Bill one eight one, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance amending ordinance six six seven two nine by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement for the twenty-six twenty-six, twenty-six thirty-two, and twenty-six thirty-four Wyoming Street redevelopment area. Board Bill one four seven, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-two twenty-six Edwards containing a severability clause. Board Bill one four eight, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-one thirty Shaw containing a severability clause. Board Bill one four nine, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-two thirty-one through fifty-two thirty-five Bischoff containing a severability clause. Board Bill one eight five, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty... fifty-two thirty-seven through fifty-two thirty-nine Bischoff containing a severability clause. Board Bill one five two, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for sixty-seven hundred Arsenal. Board Bill one eight nine, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance amending ordinance six six five five two by modifying the terms of the real estate tax abatement in the forty-three hundred through oh four, forty-three oh seven through twenty-seven, forty-three thirty-seven through thirty-nine John, and thirty-seven twenty-seven Carter, and thirty-seven twenty-four through twenty-eight West Florida. And that's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a percent, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. With dispensal line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bills one ninety and one five three, Committee Substitute.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for a third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bill on the consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Troop. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Cruzen. Twenty-nine, aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the thirteenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Dispensable line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board Bills one ninety and one fifty-three, Committee Substitute.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session fix this signature here too, to then that these may become law.
Resolution one sixty-six, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderwoman Davis. The Board of Aldermen states its intention to establish a special business district to be known as the Botanical Heights West Special Business District.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number one six six.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a note that my colleague from the nineteenth, who's been so cooperative in this effort, actually has the majority of this district in her ward. So I think perhaps we were mislisted as lead sponsor. I'll be glad to handle it on the floor, but publicly, I was just walking over to mention it to you.
That's a good one.
But in the event, I would move that we pass this reso...
We'd like to request unanimous consent.
You seek unanimous consent. I'm sorry, Mr. ...
Hearing no objection, Alderman, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve this resolution today.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by somebody else. Alderman from the twelfth. Did a sneaky, Alderman. Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. All in favor, signify by a percent, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. By your vote, you approve resolution number one six six.
Once... Resolution one six seven, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. The Board of Aldermen states its intention to establish a special business district to be known as the Forest Park Southeast Special Business District.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number one six seven.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, Alderman, please proceed.
Yes, I move for passage of resolution one sixty-seven.
Been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, entertain a second on the motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a percent, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
With dispensal line item twenty-two, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, the office will be closed Veterans Day. Friday, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the third.
Ah, Mr. President, members of the board, any Alderman that has a bill in the Streets Committee, if you'd like to have your bill heard, tell the clerk Thursday, eleven o'clock, we will hold a meeting in the leisure room.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I... We know this is deer season this weekend coming up. I'm hoping everybody's careful, but I just want everyone to keep in mind it's also Veterans Day coming up, and, you know, don't forget to thank a vet, and let's thank those who have served, and pray for ones that's serving as we currently talk now. And it's also again on the tenth is Marine Corps birthday, so I just want to say, "Semper Fi, fellow Marines."
Excellent, excellent. Alderman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have an RFP that's out for Programs for Youth at Risk, Proposition S. Those proposals are due at five p.m. next Tuesday, November thirteenth, and we are not going to be considering, as a result of the consensus of the committee, we're not going to be considering Aldermanic letters of support, so you're all off the hook. And following the past blueprint, we haven't been requiring letters of support at all in the RFP. Also, on Veterans Day, as part of that, this whole weekend, there are various celebrations of that. One that I'll make note of is at the Old Courthouse with the Old Courthouse players, who will present a radio-style play, "My Dear Julia, The Story of the Romance of Ulysses S. Grant and Julia Dent Grant." Lieutenant General Grant, of course, is the first person to receive that designation and command since Washington, so that is of some import. Those two presentations will be at one and three p.m. on Sunday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, and members of the board. The Health Committee will have a meeting Tuesday at nine thirty, and we'll go over the overview of the Community Health Assessment Plan, and the Director of Health and Hospitals will be there.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the nineteenth, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. First, I wanted to congratulate the Salvation Army Project, had a ribbon cutting yesterday for the veterans apartments, forty-eight units. They are gorgeous. I'm excited that we can offer this, new veteran housing. I also wanted to say another congratulations to the Metropolitan Art Lofts Apartments. It's for starving artists, and we had the ribbon cutting for that yesterday as well. And if you have an opportunity, go by and check the building out. Any form of art that you participate in, the supporting venues are there built for you to use, so you don't have to go out and rent space for a dance studio or any of those things. It's all built in there in an apartment. We have the kilns for ceramic, everything you need, soundproof rooms for musicians. They have small conference rooms for them to use, some of them their own small entrepreneurs. So everything you need gallery space is there. It's a beautiful building. I also wanted to say that today at Third Baptist Church, we're having our normal celebration on behalf of veterans. It'll be a great program. Brian Owens is going to sing. It starts at eleven o'clock, so I hope if you have opportunity, you'll come by and shake some hands and say thank you to some of our veterans. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the... Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I also just want to give a shout out to all the veterans. We have some veterans that serve on our board here, you know, Alderman Moore, Boyd, Arnowitz, and others. So I want to thank them and thank all the veterans in the metropolitan area. Thank you.
Also, Alderman Ortman.
And myself.
And you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the thirteen, you recognize on the motion to excuse. Alderman from the thirteen, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. All Aldermen are present.
You recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten a.m., November sixteenth.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in favor, signify by a percent, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand to adjourn.